I'm sorry. Hi, I'm a proud lifelong fan of Jeopardy and that's what I chose to be my back bitch.
I did my job longer than you.
He did, he was very correctly stated.
So it's not the same function? I guess also I made it to the next step. Yeah, and we want some medical information officer from Bishopville. Or do you know what we're getting here? You're answer of seed or in parts bishops, jurisdiction, and our policy that I write. Turn out the correct. That's associated with our advice and our size to make it even better. For me, because I had the board there, you would particularly try to get through that. And my major is design FBA, I think it has.
Hey girl. We have a closed session tonight, I don't think I. Remember we had the closed session once before?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
No.
I don't know why.
Hold on. It might be me. Can you hear me? Make a noise.
Can you hear me?
Not here.
I had a poop email. We have a closed session tonight.
Okay, so is it recorded?
I don't know if I'm recording it, I don't think I am. So it'll be the same as the last time. We will, you'll stay in this meeting. We will all leave the meeting, go into our closed meeting, which is a different sign-on. And then come back to this meeting to adjourn.
Okay.
But you have to stay, otherwise we lose the meeting. You ready for the snow?
You know, I haven't even, I didn't even know until this afternoon that it was even happening.
Neither did I, I.
I'm so.
Pay more attention.
I'm done.
You have a different view tonight.
We have a different view?
You have a different view tonight.
Oh, I'm sitting on a dining room chair because my back is hurting me.
You have an aquarium behind you.
I'll be right back.
What is? Gram crackers from Trader Joe's, it's their brand. But they're so, like, if you try to break them in half, they literally like crumble in your heat, like they crumble to nothing. Like they're not a viscose, I'll tell you that. They're so nasty.
How's the kids, all the babies?
Everybody's good. Took mom for her second dose yesterday.
My parents got theirs, I think, last week.
Took her yesterday and then. I went this morning, my sister stayed with her last night, because she lives alone. So my sister stayed with her last night and then I went this morning and. But she's fine, no reaction at all. I mean, her arm is sore, but. Nothing at all.
Good.
I get mine next week, so.
You do?
The second dose, so I'm hoping it.
You'll be fine.
My daughter-in-law and my son. Both got it and they had, um. Like a day, most the whole day of just. Flat on their back in bed.
Yeah. Yeah, a couple of people at the firehouse had the same thing where they felt like they had the flu for like 16 hours and then it was gone.
Thing is, I'm supposed to get it Tuesday. The day before the meeting. Next week.
Oh.
Meeting on Wednesday.
You might be sweating. It's like, okay.
Take attendance. I'm hoping. Don't know how long this meeting is going to take.
There's only one, right, from what I saw?
Yep.
Hopefully they talk fast.
It's, um, that one on Willow, East Willow, Advanced Accelerator, we heard, we started hearing them right.
That's the radiation place?
No, not the radiation place.
Radioactive place.
Not radioactive. Cancer man, the drug manufacturer.
I've taken that radioactive iodine several times.
Radioisotope. Radio pharmaceuticals. Not radiation. I'm getting everyone all riled up.
Swallowed those pills before, I'm still here.
Yeah, I'm getting the COVID vaccine, how bad can it be?
Exactly.
How's firehouse? No, you're in, you're in firehouse, what days?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
I sure pit bulls and pit bulls and parolee, parolee showing going, still watching it?
I cry every time, I think the season's over, I don't know, it wasn't on Saturday night. Might be over.
Never watched that.
Oh my God, I cry every week. Yep, I always watch it, because Sunday mornings, for some reason, everyone always seems to be sleeping when I wake up. I sit on the couch and put it on low and watch it by myself.
Oh my gosh. I don't know which light I should put on, if I put this light on. Then it's too bright.
You're good, you're bright. I know.
Do you have a question, Mr. Weber?
Can you hear me?
Yes, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I thought I saw you here hand raised, perhaps I was wrong. So I'm going to put you back in the attendees category till everybody shows up.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Now, what did you press to get him back? Over there.
We have to, because he wasn't panelist, he wasn't. You have to go to panelist and then if you press on their name. Where it says more. You can make them the host, the co-host change, and then it says change role to attendee. Puts them back into the attendee. Like say, if you clicked on, um, anybody's like Maggie.
Yeah, I'm clicking on Maggie and I see. Rename, allow to multi-pin, put on hold, remove.
Well, don't click on it, if you just scroll over her name and it'll say ask to unmute and more. If you press more. You should be able to do that because you're the co-host.
At next to ask to unmute, the three dots?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Press and it should say, it should say ask to unmute, hold on.
Because I have this problem in historical too.
It should say more, it should say ask to unmute and there should be another blue block that says more, you're, it might be three dots. And if you press that, it should say like ask to start video, make host, make co-host. Change role to attendee, so that you can change them.
See, I don't see that.
Hmm.
I see mute, stop video, pin, spotlight for everyone, rename, remove permission to record, allow multi-pin, put on hold, remove.
You don't have change role to attendee, that's weird because it should be. Should be the same. I don't know why. You have to have, may have to have Jesse look at that, I don't know if there's different versions of, um.
Yeah, like I couldn't get the person to go back over, so I just said hide your video and we'll, it just opened up, we're ready for you.
No, don't click on their square.
Don't click on their square.
No, not on the square, go back to the column where we have panelists and attendees, like if you were bringing some real. And go to panelists, click on more on that part and then.
Okay, now I see it, okay, I was clicking on their.
Right.
All right.
Got it. But by the end of the year, we should know how to do this.
I know. Yeah, I was literally like, I don't know how to bring you back over dude.
So don't listen to this. Don't talk. Oh my gosh. Is that my puppy? Oh puppy. How many dogs do you have now, Nicole?
Four.
So only four?
Four psychos.
One is enough for me.
I like them better than the kids.
I got no kids left in the house, so. Yep, I, well. They all have their own places now. Watching Jeopardy.
Yeah, John and I have Jeopardy competitions. Record it. And we both think, we're both like, I don't know, do you know, no.
I'm really good at the team Jeopardy. I feel like I can really compete with them.
Yeah.
Only on certain levels. They're even too smart for me. How are you Eric?
I'm doing all right, how about you?
Good.
You have a crazy night in store for us?
Are there any other kinds?
No.
I think so.
That's the problem. We got a crazy night coming in day tomorrow, so I might as well have a crazy night tonight.
Well, at least we're home.
That's true.
Good evening.
Eileen, we do not have the January 20th minutes?
No, there are no minutes.
Hello.
Good evening all, looks like we still have a couple folks we're waiting on. Um, Eileen, I don't know if you've heard from Joe, if he's trying to get in tonight? Okay. And Miriam is here just yet. Okay, I'll just give another minute and then I'll begin. It's reading of the, uh, the intro. I think Mark is here, Eileen.
Okay.
Well, let us. Again, I don't know, I mean, would you mind, um, reaching out to Joe and just seeing if he's, if he's able to, if you'd mind doing that? Because I know he was here for the, the January 6th meeting. Okay, and while Eileen does that, if you're comfortable, I'll begin, um, our Open Public Meetings Act. Ed, are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, doc. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall, posting on the front door of town hall, forwarding to the Milburn Township clerk and mailing to the item in the Star Ledger. Which publications of the officially designated township newspapers, a notice indicating that this regularly scheduled meeting would take place. On Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. At 7:30 PM via the Zoom platform. In addition, in accordance with NJSA 1049.1 and NJAC 5391.5B, electronic notice of this remote meeting. Of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting. And whether formal action may or may not be taken at this meeting has been given by posting the same on the Milburn Township official website and the main access door to the municipal building. As a reminder, in accordance with section 7A of the Open Public Meetings Act, planning boards in general and the Milburn Township Planning Board in particular, do not entertain general public comment as is otherwise required for a municipal governing body or board of education. However, all members of the public shall have the right to ask questions of witnesses presented by applicants during the course of a public hearing on an application for development. And will further have the right to make any comments with regard to that application at the appropriate time. I will announce that members of the public can ask questions of witnesses after each witness's testimony and then. Conclusion of all public questions of witnesses and. We will allow public to make any comments by being, raising their hand in the Zoom, the raise hand function. Probably at the bottom of your screen, but possibly different if you're via a phone. We'll bring you into the, the panel and allow you to come off mute and, um, and ask questions or make your public statement at such time. That can begin roll call.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston Halpert?
Here.
Jorge Mastropietro?
Yeah.
Mark Mattzel?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Sanji Benayak?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
PDJ?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Miriam Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman Beth Zoll?
Here. And before we jump into, we don't have any, um, meeting minutes, um, to review or discuss tonight. So we will be moving into our application, um, and I guess as per January 6th, um, Dan Bear, you will be recusing yourself?
I certainly will, I'll be recusing myself from this application.
Enjoy your evening, we'll see you later.
See you later.
Thank you. So we are not yet joined by Joe, so if and when he's able to join, we would have to announce such. But, Eileen, were you able to contact or not?
He's just having some logical issues. I'm sorry. He's having a little difficulty. He hopefully will get here.
Okay, understood, appreciate it. Thank you for reaching out to him. Okay, so that said, yes, we'll begin continuing from the January 6th meeting, Application 20011, Advanced Accelerator Applications. This is for preliminary and final site plan approval. Good evening, Mr. Weber. And if you just could let me know, Mr. Weber, who you would like me to bring over, I will do that.
You'd off, we would bring Samantha Teresa Alfonso, she's an attorney with Dempsey Dempsey and Sheen.
Okay.
Rob Gunning, who will be the representative of Advanced Accelerator Applications. Sanjay Patel, the civil engineer. We have in reserve, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, Michael Maris, a traffic engineer, and we have Ted Osborne, the architect, if any questions come up with regard to those issues. We also have available Brian McPeak, who was the author on behalf of PS who prepared the EIS that's been submitted to the board. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. This is the continuation of the hearing on behalf of Accelerator Application with regard to the development of the property located at 45 and 57 East Willow Street. The site plan that is before the board is occasioned by the proposed consolidation of the two properties, which consists of the existing office building at 45 East Willow and the existing pharmaceutical manufacturing facility at 57 East Willow. In addition to that, there are proposed external changes associated with the consolidation of the two properties in order to achieve a cohesive facility. One of those is the consolidation of the driveways in order to eliminate one of the dead ends and to allow for a flow of traffic from East Willow around the back of 45 and back to East Willow. I could ask for Samantha Alfonso to go to a screen so I can refer to the variances that are associated with this and to identify, Mr. Boozak, we've been able to eliminate some variances so that we can keep this trimmed. So if we can go to the site plan, Ms. Alfonso? What she's put up is 45.
I don't know if these, I don't believe we got to the point of you sharing screens before, so I think we'll want to identify each exhibit. I apologize if you've done that already, though.
We have not, I don't believe. Ms. Alfonso is usually in charge of the exhibit, so I would rely on her. She's been in communication with the secretary, so I'll be guided by their response and by Mr. Boozak's instruction.
Sure.
I have a note that we had marked as A1 sheet CO6, which was the grading plan dated September 23, 2020. That was the only exhibit that I had noted in my notes.
That makes sense. So if we can go to the corner of this sheet to see whether or not this is in fact CO6, 123, 2020, and we see that this is CO5, so I would ask that this be marked as A2.
And I think we have a new revision date because new plans were submitted on, I think they were dated February 3rd. Although each sheet, I believe, was not revised, so I don't know if this sheet, I can't see it on.
Ms. Alfonso, can we go to the lower right corner?
Yes.
Actually, I think it's the upper right corner.
It just takes a moment to load here.
Yeah, I think it's the upper right corner is where the revision dates are right there. Okay, that has not been revised, so this is 9/23/2020.
Very good.
Thank you.
And when we look at this plan, and if we start with the dual driveways while we're waiting for this to load, between 45 and 57, thank you, that is the first of the variances where we have, as the board may see, three driveways, one to the right of 57, one between 45 and 57, and then one to the left of 45. These are all existing curb cuts, but the ordinance, when you modulate the property, only allows for two curb cuts. We're asking for a variance to allow for the three. Then when we go to 45, which is the office building on the left, Willow Street, to the bottom of the sheet, we have the existing, we have a redone canopy that stays within the existing canopy's footprint. We are adding a stucco front, and that stucco front is one and a half inches closer to East Willow. So where East Willow is at 14.6 feet, we have a technical, a minimalist variance for adding the stucco in the front of an additional one and a half inches. As we go around to the left and we go back toward the rear of 45, and Ms. Alfonso? The CO7. So that we can take a look at the landscape plan, which has the additional variances. Thank you. And if we take.
Why don't we mark, why don't we mark this 8/3, and it's sheet CO7A, if I saw it correctly, is.
Yes.
Growing.
That's right.
And is the date, I assume this is a new sheet, so this probably is dated as of the 2nd of February? I don't know. The top right.
Oh.
Yep.
February 3rd.
2/3, right.
If the board recalls, when the board was setting a new date for the presentation and the follow-up of the EIS, and we were pushing for an earlier date, as it turns out, having a later date allowed us to really get everything in within the set time, so. I bow to your experience. So when we look at behind 45, you'll see that there is a fence that's proposed. It's a board-on-board seven-foot fence, and that is along the area that is going to be occupied by the parking area. That continues across to the end of 57 or the corner of 57, and then picks up again at the parking aisle to the right of 57. This seven-foot board-on-board fence, and the reason it's board-on-board is because it's in the flood area and has to allow for water passage pursuant to the DEP requirements. This comes as a request of the neighbors in discussions with the Advanced Accelerator. They had requested a fence. It was proposed at 6. They asked for 7, and we indicated that because the benefits to be gained by this proposed seven-foot fence, and given its location will substantially outweigh any detriment, we proceeded with agreeing to represent to the board that we would request that variance. You will also see that there is a line of proposed landscaping that is within the flood area, and that comes again as a result of discussions with Raway Road. That is required to be approved by the DEP, and the type of permit that would be required would either be an individual or a general permit. And the representation will be made by Mr. Gunning that if the board approves this application, that that request to the DEP will be made within 60 days. That eliminates one of the variances, because one of the variances was in having a buffer, you have to have evergreen plantings with it. Now with these proposed evergreen plantings, if it were to be approved by the DEP, that would eliminate that variance. When we go further to the right of 57, we see that there is the dead end. That dead end aisle on the right of 57 was previously approved by the planning board as part of its site plan approval in 2015. To the extent that it's required for us to request that variance, we will request that variance. And I'm trying to figure out what the last variance is that we had, so give me a second. And I really must compliment the PSNS, the architect, and Advanced Accelerator for really scrutinizing the application in order to eliminate as many variances as they could. One of the variances was that there was an aisle with variance associated behind 45 with the expert advice of Mr. Maris, the traffic engineer, Sanjay Patel, overseen by Advanced Accelerator. They have eliminated that aisle with variance, and as a result, that is no longer needed as well. Mr. Patel has also eliminated the need for a variance with regard to depressed sidewalks. And I believe that identifies the variances that are associated with this application. I see that, Madam Chairwoman, that Mr. Steinberg has joined, and I don't know whether or not you would want me to recite those variances again, or whether that summary of the ones that have been corrected with the new one of being the seven-foot fence needs to be reiterated.
About a minute and a half, two minutes ago, so I.
Great, so we just want to state for the record that Joe Steinberg has joined the meeting at 7:45 PM. Are you able to hear us? I just want to confirm. We can see you, we just can't hear you.
You're on mute, Joe.
Joe, you are muted. I don't know if you know how to unmute yourself, but if you cover your mouth.
Yeah, now I can do it. I actually was on about 10 minutes ago.
10 minutes ago, okay, so you did hear the variances that Mr. Weber just outlined?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weber, for checking.
Thank you. Unless the board has any questions of me, I would call Robert Gunning on behalf of Advanced Accelerator Applications to the stand to be sworn in to give testimony in this matter.
Great, please bring forth your witness. And that's Mr. Gunning. Okay, you're here, right?
Mr. Gunning, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Robert Gunning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gunning, what's your role at Advanced Accelerator Applications?
I am the head of Finance Transformation and in Vortis, Facilities Management falls under the finance function. I am the project lead on the 45 Willow project renovation, and I am the overall project lead on the site plan as well. And I sit on the steering committee of both the 45 Willow renovation project as well as the 57 Willow renovation.
So if I ask, so if I ask you if you're familiar with the application, what would your answer be?
Yes, I am.
And are you authorized to respond on behalf of Advanced Acceleration, that's AAA in connection with this application?
Understood. Yes, I am.
What's the purpose of the application?
The purpose of the application is that it's for the consolidation of two existing buildings. One that it's a permitted office building and one which is a permitted radio pharmaceutical processing facility. We want to achieve an overall coordinated campus by doing this. The site plan also, too, I should note, was developed sensitive to the residents of Raway Road as well as the community.
And with regard to that, you've hired PSNS as an engineer and as an architect to prepare a plan in connection with this application, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we're going to be hearing from them, but for now, could you briefly describe for the board what the proposal is?
Sure. Let me start off by describing exactly the existing facilities. So 45 East Willow, it's an existing commercial building, which was currently under renovation for administrative support for the existing staff at the processing facility located at 57, which is also currently under renovation. Both of these properties were built back in the 1960s, and they were constructed independent of each other. And even though they sit next to each other, the parking and driveways are not efficiently laid out as they could otherwise be if they're a combined site. So what we'd like to do for the purpose of this, the site improvement, is we'd like to improve the traffic flow between the two properties. Under your ordinance, that requires the consolidation of both the 45 and 57 East Willow properties. And another purpose that we'd like to do is to create one office building and one pharmaceutical processing facility. So we've moved the office facilities that were in 57 Willow, and they'll be moving over to 45 Willow. And this will create a coordinated campus between the two buildings and allow the administrative support to go back and forth between the two buildings. Another added benefit, too, for us as a corporate level, is it's more efficiently to, that we can manage the both sites, having them, having it combined together. And it's also to, understood and not planned for, that the consolidation would also benefit the township with its regulation of properties.
And you're also interested in addressing the exterior architecture of 45 to have it blend into 57?
Yes, yes, that would include both the canopy as well as the EPIS on the front of the building.
Now, have you had a chance to talk with your surrounding property owners, and those are the two commercial property owners on either side?
Yes, we've contacted both of the commercial properties, and they did not have, did not come back with any comments.
Now, you've also spoken with the Raway Road neighborhood, have you not?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and we've submitted to the board a written document, which is intended as a summary of the discussions that you've had with Raway Road residents, which I've alluded to, and if I could have that.
Jim, you broke up for a second. You requesting the 8-point note? The statement?
Yes, I think, I think Mr. Weber was looking to put up on the screen the February 17, 2021 statement of residents' requests and AAA responses that were part of the package that you submitted on February 4th.
I would ask that that be, well, let's get it. There we go.
Mark that as A4, and it's the February, sorry, 17, 2021 AAA statement of resident requests and responses. Mr. Weber?
I'm sorry, Mr. Boozak.
I'm sorry, I was passing the gauntlet back to you.
Mr. Gunning, referring to what's been marked as A4, can you identify this document? And then we can go through it in more detail, but would you identify what this is for the board?
Yes, I can identify this document. This document was an agreement that we came together with representatives from the Raway Road.
Now. And, Mr. Gunning, you're welcome to summarize this, and perhaps if you just, and I'll be guided by how the board wants to manage this. It's several pages long, but Mr. Gunning can walk through the changes that AAA is agreeing to, and we can walk that down and indicate in general what the request was and how AAA has responded. And it should be indicated, and I would ask you to confirm this, Mr. Gunning, that if the board were to approve this application, and the board is subject to deciding which conditions it is going to impose, but the board is to approve this application, would you be willing to agree to a condition that would call for these statements that you're making here to be included as a resolution of approval?
Yes.
And would you please describe what was the request of the neighbors and the response of AAA?
Yeah, I'll go through and I'll describe each one of the residents' requests, and then I can read what are, what are actions that we intend to, intend to take. So the first one there, there was, the residents raised a concern. So the first one there, there was the residents raised a concern regarding the building lighting and whether shades. Or tinting, tinting could be installed on the existing windows. And then as our response, we will install tinting on the windows as proposed by the residents as an alternative solution. There are FDA regulations regarding clean surfaces that preclude us from installing any internal shades on these windows. This solution will be implemented for the four river facing windows at 57 Willow directly. The 45 facility does not currently and will not post construction have any windows facing the river. The next item there essentially is regarding evergreen shading for the, on the property with the concern for both light and noise pollution. What we've agreed with the residents is that we would plant evergreen trees with a minimum of 10 feet height. Height along the riverside of both the 45 and 57 Willow Street. With and subject to the recommendation of the township forester. Because of the river, the plant. Is subject to Department of Environmental Protection approval. The number and placement of trees will be appropriate to act as a visual and auditory screen for 57 and 45 Willow properties. And particularly their parking lots from the residence across the river. So essentially what we want to do is be able to block any, any light or noise coming across the river to the residents homes. Perhaps if we could scroll down to the, to the next one. The next one was regarding fencing to shield parking lot headlights as cars come and go in and out of the parking lot. What we've agreed to do is we will request the variance from the Melbourne Township Planning Board to install seven foot solid fencing. Subject to DEP, DEP approval as well. The next one after that was regarding the location of evergreens in relation to the fencing. What we've agreed to do is we will plant the evergreen trees with a minimum heights of 10 feet. On the riverside of the parking lot fencing, so that essentially to block the fencing for view of the, of the neighbors. And, and once again, that it will also be subject to DEP approval. The, the next one there was regarding the reinforcement of the robbery riverbank. With this one, we'll contact the DEP regarding their assessment of the riverbank behind both Willow Street properties. That's both 57 and 45. And their recommendation is what can be done to reinforce the riverbank. As well as obtain any necessary approvals within implementing that solution. Next, there was a concern regarding restricting of deliveries as well as construction. And when you see in the first section there, we've agreed to restrict deliveries and constructions between 8 AM and 7 PM on weekdays. And 9 AM and 5 PM on weekends, subject to the following exceptions. We produce a life-saving cancer treatment and emergency shipments are sometimes required at times outside of those windows. The other one is we've rescheduled our existing garbage removal service to 7 AM. And we will reposition our garbage dumpster away from the river and closer to the middle of the building. The latter time, the later time is not any later time beyond 7 AM is not practical due to the congestion of our parking lot once employees arrive. Also too, we noted as an exception that we will restrict all interior construction to between 7 AM and 7 PM. Versus the above window of 8 AM and 7 PM on weekdays. Then we further noted that exterior, exterior construction will be restricted to the requested window. Of 8 AM and 7 PM on weekdays and between 9 AM and 5 PM on weekends. Also was noted too, that came, the residents brought to our detention that verbally, that garbage trucks were idling on our property. We've instructed our garbage removal company that they are not to idle on a property beyond what is necessary for the garbage removal.
Mister, I can, Mr. Gunning, there was also a question about backup beepers that the neighbors had inquired about. Did you inquire of your experts as to whether or not they could be removed?
We did inquire our experts and I will see that on the next page and then from a safety, safety standpoint, those beepers could not be removed. The delivery truck backup beepers cannot be deactivated as it is essential safety measure. The posed fencing and landscaping will help to dampen the sound.
And then you've indicated that these restrictions will be implemented directly. When you refer to restrictions, what are you talking about?
This is the restriction of operation to, to, to the use of when, when we will have deliveries and construction on our properties.
And, and the garbage truck as well?
Yes, the garbage truck has actually already been changed.
Good, I'm sorry for interrupting, please continue.
Oh, no worries. The, the, the next one item, item there was regarding repositioning and or shielding of lighting facing the riverbank. What we've agreed to do is that will reposition or shield any parking lot lighting to face Willow Street and away from the riverbank. And once again, this is subject to DEP approval. And then the next one there was regarding the visibility of ventilation equipment and other equipment that's on top of 45 Willow. And what we've, we've noticed is that we'll remove the current HVAC unit from the roof of 45 Will and a new unit will be installed on the ground. Therefore, there'll be no equipment on the rooftop of 45. And, and one, and so one thing we just, we wanted to, it's our goal to complete our DP applications. And filing and include the consultation with DP regarding the riverbank within the next 60 days, if not sooner. Following the approval of the site plan application. It is our understanding that these discussions are subject to the approval of the planning board of the township of Melbourne. If the planning board finds them acceptable and if the planning board approves the site plan application. Then AAA will begin, will would agree to these recommendations and conditions for approval. We look forward to continue partnership with our robbery road neighbors and keep them informed of our progress as we address their concerns.
I would ask that the next exhibit, which I believe is C07A identified as A3 be brought up on the screen.
Mr. Weber, before, before you move away from this one, I just want to raise two points. One is, and I know that it looks like you have these exhibits organized electronically. So that they are just flowing from one to the other and that's, that's fine. But with regard to what we've marked as A4, that just consists of three pages. I happen to see somewhere on the screen, I'm not sure where. I thought it said three of nine, yeah, that was it down at the right there, three of nine. If I understand it correctly, this exhibit A4 just consists of these three pages, is that correct?
That's correct.
The second thing, so, so the record should so reflect. The second thing that I just want to raise with you is. Incorporating some of these provisions as conditions, I appreciate the applicant's acknowledgement. That they're prepared to accept these conditions. And I understand the objective of doing so as explained. The concern I have is enforcement. When. And, and I haven't gone through these. From the perspective from which I am going to speak, but. The township doesn't have, with all due respect to the staff people who are here. The personnel to be going out policing some of these things. And when they become conditions in resolutions, they then become the job of the municipality to enforce. And I say this more as a cautionary comment for the board. That we need to keep that in mind in terms of conditions that are imposed that are particularly geared to. Alleviate certain concerns now, for example, the fence and the plantings, the, the variance requested for the fence and the installation of a fence. The installation of plantings for buffering, those are items that are typically part of site plans that the board reviews and. Comments on and ultimately incorporates. A couple of these other ones, I'm a little bit more concerned about in terms of garbage pickup and when it's picked up and. You know, I, I'm not sure the township is going to be involved in unless there's some ordinance in the municipality, which could exist. I'm just not familiar with all that. That, you know, here's, here's the time period that the garbage has to be picked up by a certain time. That trucks can't be idling. That construction is going to take place between these hours and these hours and external construction between these hours and these hours. And deliveries between these hours and these hours. Those are the kinds of things that I appreciate very much, the applicants concessions, and I think the residents appreciate that. But I have some concern about incorporating some of these things in a resolution despite the applicant's acquiescence to that. So I just put that out there for now, we should continue. But perhaps some of that can be given thought either tonight or, or some other time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak, those are well stated and appropriate concerns. We've had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Gunning to identify the person at the site. That if there is an issue that arises that the neighbor needs to reach that person, they can reach, they can reach them. Now, we don't want to give out that cell phone in the public hearing, you understand. But I would ask Mr. Gunning if he has identified the person that the neighbors can speak to. And identify the business number that they'd be able to reach, reach them. In the event that we end up with a contractor mustering before the allotted time. Or it's a cold day and they decide that they're going to start their generator before the allotted time. Which would be a violation, how do those neighbors get a quick answer? And, and I would also recall and bring this to the board's attention that AAA has, has a history. So we don't have someone who is unresponsive, but if you have that name, Mr. Gunning?
Yeah, yes, I have provided the, the neighbors essentially with a name of a contact. If you like, I can put it on the record.
I, I don't think we need to put it on the record, Mr. Gunning, and, and I think we may be able to address this in, in a different way. Given what Mr. Weber has just said and you've just acknowledged. To, to have the. To have the enforcement, which was my primary concern here, through a relationship of. AAA with the neighbors, so to speak. So we may be able to deal with that in that way, but I don't, I don't think we need to put the name on. We acknowledge and appreciate what you've put on the record, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bozak. Ms. Alfonso, can you pull up the diagram of the board's? Of the triple A's or a agreement with the neighbors? And I think that's it, isn't it? And that should be C07A. And, Mr. Gunning, could I draw your attention to 45 East Willow?
Yes.
And behind 45 East Willow, there's a traffic, not a traffic, there's a light pole. At the, at the end of the property by the parking lot. And when I say end of the property, the property actually goes over Raw Way Road, doesn't it?
That is correct.
The property line is.
May I, may I, I'm sorry to interrupt again. May I just suggest two things that perhaps Ms. Alfonso would be able to blow this up a little bit and focus on. Where Mr. Gunning's testimony is going to be focused. And secondly, if you're pointing out specific things on there. Perhaps Ms. Alfonso can move her mouse around and give us a quick sense of where we're talking about. I mean, I'm, I'm following all right, but we have members of the public and they're trying to look at it as well. And they may not have the benefit of the law drawings that I do.
So I would draw your attention, Mr. Gunning, to the light pole with the designation A underneath it at the end of the parking lot.
Yes.
And you've reload, you've directed your civil engineer to relocate that light pole. Consistent with the written agreement that you have with the Raw Way Road neighborhood to have it facing toward 45. And not toward the river.
Yeah, there, there's that, that particular pole is being installed with shading. So that it faces, the, the light emanates towards Willow Street and not towards the robbery river.
And there's the seven foot board on board fence. That runs along the edge of the pavement between the trees and the pavement. And it goes from the left to the right, that could be highlighted, please, Ms. Alfonso. And I think it continues or not, doesn't go any further, nope, doesn't go that far.
Yeah.
They wanted to keep the trees there, so back up a little bit, there we go. And it does go to the end of 45, 57, I mean.
Yeah, it goes the entire length of the 45 property. It goes the, on to the 57 property headed east and it stops at the end.
Go a little bit further, Sam.
Yeah, it stops at the building corner.
Right there.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so that's, that's, that would be the fencing and then once again, that was the part of my testimony earlier. That, that's the, that's designed to block car headlights, thank you, thank you Samantha.
And the fence continues on the bright side of 57?
Correct, so if we continue on the opposite corner of 57 at the back of the parking lot. There is a, yes, right there. So once again, that, that's intended to block the car headlights as cars come in and out of the parking lot.
And then with regard to the representation about 45 and the equipment off the roof, they are being relocated behind 45, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then you've indicated that the garbage or the trash receptacles and enclosure have been relocated away from the end of 57. And relocated more toward East Willow, could that be highlighted on the left of 57?
Yes, so if we, if we go to 57, there is a call out box. And if we go to the end of that call out box, that's where the waste receptacles will be located. Currently, they're at the back end of the parking lot, yes, right there. They're at the back end of the parking lot. Now, we've located, we've moved it to trash receptacles to around mid property, that, yes, it's that whole entire area.
Thank you, Mr. Gunning, and if I could then draw your attention to the. And I'm just catching up here, we've also had a chance to review the reports of the and comments of the board's professionals, have you not?
Yes, I've read them.
Okay, and subject to the comments of your experts, are you willing to agree to be bound by any of the conditions set forth in those reports?
Yes, we're willing to accept the findings, the experts subject to our, our experts' opinion.
At one point, we need to confirm. I made the representation and I'm not sure you testified to it. You'd be willing if the board approves the application to file the requisite permits with the DEP within 60 days, is that correct?
That is correct, that was part of our agreement with the neighbors.
I have nothing further, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, and just to make sure that I understood, because our planners' reports were, I just want to make sure there were professional reports. There's the fire chief, I, I just want to understand what Mr. Gunning just testified that, that they would be meeting.
That we can walk through those reports with him, but he's basically had a chance to review the planner, the fire chief, the forester. And AAA is willing to agree to their recommendations, but subject to the experts. Who would then be able to address those port parts of the reports that required a little bit more explication.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, okay. Are there any members of the board that have questions for Mr. Gunning? Mr. Steinberg, just unmute yourself.
Okay, my question of the expert is this, when he talks about 10 feet. Height of the trees, are you talking about 10 feet above the root ball?
Yeah, it's, it would be 10 feet. Yeah, it would be 10 feet above the ground. So I have our town, our site engineer talk about that further. But the objective is to obstruct above the ground 10 feet.
Where's 10 feet above the root ball?
Correct.
Now, the other question I have is you testified at some length to this document, which lays out your responses to the neighbors' requests. But you never said anything about what the neighbors thought about your responses. What did they think?
No, that they responded that 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 they were resolved, their requests were resolved.
Did you get that in writing?
Email communication.
An email communication? From whom? Do you recall?
There was two representatives of the Raré residents that that basically came forward with dialogue. And that they basically coordinated all the efforts of the Raré residents.
Do you remember their names?
Yes, is it, is it okay to disclose their names in a public forum?
Sure.
Is it? Okay. That would be Corey Biller and Alan Sloan.
And you got their responses by an email, you said?
Correct.
Are you willing to submit that email, Mr. Weber, to the board?
I don't happen to have it, Mr. Steinberg. If I did, we would be willing to submit it. I would ask, Madam Chairwoman, if we could see if Mr. Sloan or Mr. Biller are available?
Yes, I see that both are attendees and I see Mr. Biller has raised his hand. So if it's okay if we hold and they both have raised their hand, thank you both. I guess, why don't we go ahead and do that? And then we'll proceed with questions from members of the board. But let's go ahead, Eileen, and bring in, you can bring in both of them, it's okay, I think. Good evening, Mr. Sloan and Biller. I would invite you one at a time, feel free to pick and choose to provide your response or introduce yourself, come off mute and
I guess I'll go first. I am Corey Biller. I'm a resident on Rawway Road. I have been in contact on behalf of approximately 10 other houses on Rawway Road with AAA to discuss our concerns and
Mr. Biller, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I can't see you, but I, I can hear you. We need to swear you in. I seem to think you may have been sworn in at the last meeting. If you have, then you remain under oath. If you have not, I'm going to ask Mr. Fishman to place you under oath, and the same with Mr. Sloan. It would be helpful if you have your video feed. Mr. Biller, I say, thank you. I'm sorry. Were you sworn, Mr. Biller, at the last hearing? Do you recall?
I don't recall, but happy to do it now.
Okay, Mr. Fishman, if you would do the honors.
If you would just raise your right hand, please. Mr. Biller, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and your name and address for the record.
Corey Biller, 13 Rawway Road, Milburn, New Jersey.
And thank you, Mr. Biller. I interrupted you. Please proceed.
No, no problem at all. So as I was explaining, myself and Alan Sloan on behalf of approximately 10 other homes on Rawway Road contacted AAA and have been in ongoing discussions with AAA about our concerns and proposed resolutions. The document they submitted tonight, in fact, was prepared with our review and our edits and our comments. And so I can confirm that the the agreements that they made in that document do reflect our concerns and and the negotiated outcome. And I use the term negotiated very lightly, as I, I will say, the AAA has been very open to working with us. We've had numerous telephone calls. They've been all very cordial. And so far, we have no reason to believe that they will not carry through on their their promises because they've been very good in working with us so far.
Thank you.
I see we also have Mr. Sloan here, Madam Chairwoman. And perhaps Mr. Fishman, again, if you could do the honors, since his name was mentioned, we can get his comment as well.
So just, do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Alan, A L L A N Sloan, 12 Rawway Road, Milburn.
Please proceed, Mr. Sloan.
All right. Mr. Biller, or Corey, as I call him, has pretty much summarized the situation. We approached AAA, AAA treated us like human beings. They were polite. They talked to us. They, we didn't have, you know, 16 lawyers running around. We just sat and negotiated. And one afternoon, two of the people here, Mr. Gunning and Mr. Patel, came, met the neighbors on our side of the river, looked at things, saw what the situation was and understood why was we wanted what we wanted. I happen at 12 to be directly across the river from 57 and the light is disturbing. And if they put up those trees, that solves my light problem. And they say they're going to do it, and I have no reason not to trust them.
Thank you, sir.
As as an attorney, I do object to Alan's description of other attorneys.
I was going to say something, but I thought that was probably beyond my power, but I appreciate it, Mr. Biller.
Well, I have a very large libel policy, so feel free to take action.
You're welcome. Okay, so thank you for your testimony and we'll have you be put back as attendees. If for some reason you want to ask questions of other applicants, you certainly are permitted to do so at the appropriate Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, and apologies, that was a, I think, a healthy sidetrack. But we're going to go back and I want to ask other members of the board if they had any additional questions for Mr. Gunning. And guess what?
Yep. So actually, maybe not Mr. Gunning, but Ed. Ed, what happens if something in the stipulations may not be in accordance with the town ordinances? For instance, construction on Sundays, so we don't allow construction on Sundays for commercial entities. If that's in the stipulations that we put into the application resolution, do those govern or do the ordinances govern?
The ordinances will govern, and that's one of the ancillary concerns to which I was alluding when we were talking about these these agreements. But clearly, the planning board cannot impose conditions or allow things beyond what is permitted under the ordinances.
And on behalf of AAA, they would comply with all ordinances.
Okay, and then I have, I have two more very quick questions. Maybe another one for Ed, maybe, maybe for Mr. Gunning about solid fencing. If if they require solid fencing, but then the EPA or I forgot what entity from New Jersey it was that's going to, going to require a certain type of fencing. If they don't do solid and it doesn't quite cover the shielding that the neighbors or the residents are looking for, what do we do then?
If I can be heard on that, Mr. Bozek.
You're my guest.
Thank you. I would suggest that the board retain jurisdiction over that issue and be ready to entertain why the board on board fence was not acceptable to the DEP. From our understanding, the DEP needs the fences to allow water to pass through. And our representative who had obtained the permit by rule and the correspondence from the DEP allowing the application to proceed without the fencing and the screening is comfortable that the DEP will find that acceptable. To the extent that it's included as a condition of approval of the planning board, then that helps because it indicates that the local municipality is also interested in seeing that change. So we're positive about that. Won't be cheap. It, it'll be expensive. It'll take time for AAA to do that. But they've agreed that they're willing to engage in that process.
Okay, thank you. And the last question I had was about emergency deliveries. How many emergency deliveries do you expect? Or like, to me, that's, I can declare anything an emergency and it can happen. Is there anything that can kind of cap that?
I can't put a cap on it. Most of the time, emergency deliveries are weather dependent. So as as flights are delayed and we have to reroute doses. So say, you know, typical example, we may have a dose that's going to Wisconsin, okay? And there's a snowstorm in the Chicago area. Originally, we may have been routing that dose through O'Hare, okay? However, now because of the conditions, we may have to route the dose through Dallas. So that, and what we'll do is we'll send out an emergency dose so that we have two doses in transit to the actual institution to to help save the patient. So it's, well, depends on the facts and circumstances. Unfortunately, it's not something that we plan around.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Other questions for Mr. Gunning? Sanjay?
First of all, thank you so much, Mr. Weber, Mr. Gunning, Mr. Patel. Last meeting, I was the one who asked for environmental study. And I went through the environmental study. 2.2 additional consideration radioactive materials was the thing I was entrusted in. I wanted to know about your raw materials, finish good, their short leap or short shelf life. I wanted to make sure that the disposable or disposal of those materials are done correctly. And I was extremely impressed to go through this report and and saw that you don't even dispose anything, any radioactive materials within town. You're sending it outside. So thank you so much for for taking care and sending this report well in advance. I just wanted to let you all know, I've seen the residential talking about you all, how you presented yourself and how you presented on my question from last time. Thank you so much. There's no question I have. My questions are all answered.
Thank you, Mr. Benayak. Great. Mark, I see you have a question. There you go. You moved around on me. Mark, you are muted. Now you turn your camera off. There we go. You're back. Okay.
Those days. I have a, I have a question about your stormwater management plan.
Oh, just speak up. You're a little soft. Sorry.
Thanks. Is that better?
Yep.
Thanks. I have a question about your stormwater management plan and the possibility of retaining more stormwater on the site through, you know, the enhancements that you're going to make on your bio swell or your stone drainage swell that you have, the existing rain garden. Is it possible to to enlarge it to basically capture more stormwater? You're not going to either flood the parking lot or or run more water into the West Branch?
I can. We're going to call Sanjay Patel, who's a civil engineer from PSNS, and he would be more appropriate to answer that question, if we may, Mr. Mattzel.
Let's wait until Mr. Patel's witness, yeah, moment. But but thank you. Mark, do you have other questions that perhaps Mr. Gunning can address? Any other questions from the board for Mr. Gunning right now? Okay, great. Not seeing any. So any members of the public who may have questions for Mr. Gunning based on his testimony, now is the time to raise your hand if you do. But not seeing any at the moment. So thank you. Okay, so Mr. Weber, thank you for having Mr. Gunning join us and by testimony.
I would ask that Sanjay Patel be called to the screen to be sworn into testimony in this matter.
Thank you. And I, if I recall, Mr. Patel may have been sworn in last meeting?
I don't recall.
Yes, Mr. Patel, you do or you don't recall?
I, I think I remember swearing, you know.
I think you did.
Yes, I, my notes indicate that he testified at the last hearing, so I assume he was sworn in. Followed our usual protocol.
Great. So in which case you're still under oath, and so we welcome you back.
Thank you.
Mr. Patel, would you go over your, your qualifications as a civil engineer for the board? Would you include those municipalities that you've testified before? And whether or not you've had the opportunity to testify in those municipalities that would be familiar to Milburn?
Sure. In terms of my qualifications, educational qualification, I have a master's degree in civil engineering. Over 34, 35 years of experience in civil site engineering, environmental and other disciplines. I'm a senior director at PSNS. And I have testified numerous times before the boards, Board of Adjustments and Planning Boards. Most recently, I've testified in City of Summit. Before that, a couple of months ago, I had testified in the town of Carney and numerous other municipalities in New Jersey.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
And yes, I'm licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and New York.
Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Bozek, I would submit Mr. Patel as an expert in civil engineering.
I have no, no questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, we'll hear Mr. Patel, continue hearing him as a civil engineer.
Mr. Patel, you're familiar with the application that's currently pending before the planning board of the township of Milburn?
Yes, I am.
And how did you achieve that familiarity?
Achieved the familiarity with the the requirements of our client for the improvements, site improvements around the existing building, review of the the current zoning standards and improvement standards of the Milburn Township. And made site visits to review the existing condition and see how best we can design the proposed improvements.
And can you describe for the board what is proposed?
Sure. Am I allowed to share the screen?
You should be able to.
If you may, recede the the screen. So this is
We can see it.
This is the same exhibit as it was shown before. Landscape exhibit C 7A, C 07A.
And that's
I can, Mr. Patel.
Eight three.
I'm not sure that this is a three. Let's go down to landscape exhibit because I think that this one, let's go down to the bottom so I can see the designation in the right hand corner.
Yeah, this is
Okay.
Yeah, this is 7A. So basically, we have site improvements proposed for the site around existing building 45 and 57. Starting from building 57, we have an existing loading dock in the west side of the building 57 that's being reconfigured. Similarly, on the east side of the building 57 also, we are reconfiguring, configuring the loading dock. As Mr. Weber mentioned before, we have two access points for building 57. It remains same. They're both two way. The improvement that we are making is proposing a new turnaround in existing condition. It's a deadened aisle. And we are providing a turnaround now, which eliminates certain parking spots here that were existing. However, we still meet the parking requirements by the ordinance. We actually exceed the parking requirements. In addition to that, as
While you're on that side of the building, Mr. Patel, there's also proposed a UPS structure?
I was going to go to that. Yeah, so that is
I'm sorry to interrupt.
An existing generator, and we are going to add a UPS an existing generator and we are going to add a UPS, you know, uninterrupted power supply unit adjacent to that. So there'll be a little bit of extension of that enclosure with a chain link fence. That is the eight-foot-high chain link fence, which is existing. We're just extending that around that UPS unit.
So I'm sorry, did you say an eight, eight-foot-high chain link fence that you're extending? Okay.
Yeah, which is
Mr. Boozak, then the question comes up as to whether or not a variance is required for that extension of the eight-foot fence. My understanding was that AAA was going to bring the fences, except for the seven-foot fence for the neighbors into compliance with the ordinance. So is it possible to amend the application to include a request for a variance to include the extension of the fence at eight foot or to include the UPS, since we have an existing chain link fence for the purposes of security?
I'm looking at your variance list, Mr. Weber, which you so kindly put together.
It does not include that includes a seven-foot fence along the rear, does not include the eight-foot fence. Was, is my understanding that we were going to bring everything that could be brought into compliance into compliance? I may ask Mr. Gunning to confirm. And I may be doing that off-screen while we continue with Mr. Patel's testimony.
Why don't we do that? We, we really have to resolve that by the time the planner testifies. So why don't we deal with this now with Mr. Patel?
If you would continue, Mr. Patel.
Thanks. So continuing with the other improvements on the existing lot 85, which has building 57. There were a couple of parking spots that are being used in existing condition, which are within the right of way. We are eliminating them. We are, we are providing the striping. We're not going to remove the pavement, obviously. However, they will not be used and will be striped and eliminated as a parking spot. On the west side of the building, the only improvements, exterior improvements are the trash enclosure and reconfiguration of the loading dock here. This area is a stripe pavement for truck turnaround. As mentioned by Mr. Gunning before, respecting the Rave Road neighbor's request, we have proposed additional planting. The existing is in light green. These are the existing trees that we have. And we are proposing new trees. There's a gap between these existing trees. We'll fill up with that. Evergreen trees, 10-foot-high Norway spruce and red cedar. And we have also proposed, there could be another sight line from the driveway here over to the neighbors on the other side. So we have proposed some more trees on the other side of the rain garden. There is an existing rain garden for lot 85, which receives runoff from almost half of the site. And that flows through the rain garden into a stone line swell and into the river. No improved, no, no operations are proposed for that. We are removing certain pavement within the repair zone, which is, if you could see this, I mean, so this cross-touched area is the pavement that we are removing. We are removing pavement from two areas. One is that 57 and one is on lot 84, building 45. Behind that, we are removing certain part of the pavement, which I will go over in a minute. So the new trees will be planted. And as mentioned before, we will also be installing the fence, a seven-foot-high fence, which basically will block the headlights from these drivers. So the chain link fence is proposed on this part of lot 85. The second section continues between building 87 and 45 in the back, all the way to the east westerly lot line of lot 84, building 45. Moving forward, these two-way aisles will be then connected directly to the building 45, lot 84. We are a one-way driveway. And currently, this parking lot is in a very poor condition. The pavement is not in a good condition. There is pounding in the back of the, the parking lot. By grading, regrading that, we have eliminated that. And removal of the pavement that I was meant, I mentioned before, also allows us to now provide a little buffer with landscaping and fencing. And for the stormwater runoff, the sheet floor will flow into the re-prep lined stone line swell, which is between the fence and the row of the new evergreen trees. And we are also going to try in coordinating with the EP for the permitting, we will try to accommodate, if possible, a rain garden within this area. The line that we have to respect, which is the environmental sensitive, environmentally sensitive, the area, which is the flood, floodway line. This line here, which is floodway, we cannot cross that because none of the disturbance within the floodways are allowed. Beyond the floodway, if we can extend the area to provide the rain garden, we'll be trying that and we'll discuss that with the EP. Also, as mentioned before, we will be contacting the EP for stabilization of the riverbank. Some of the areas are already stabilized behind 57. Certain areas, east of 57, certain areas of 45 could use some riverbank stabilization.
Let me interrupt if you don't mind, Mr. Patel. While we talk about the issues of the swell behind 45 and the proposed approach to the DEP for stabilization. The issue of the stabilization was part of the neighborhood agreement, but it was something where AAA agreed to contact the DEP to get their opinion with regard to proceeding on that stabilization first. And that's given the nature of the river and whether or not the DEP would consider that an appropriate step to be undertaken with regard to everything else. Yes, that is something that is going to be the subject of a permit application. I wanted to make sure that was clear. Is that your understanding, Mr. Patel?
That's true. That is my thing.
And likewise, with regard to your representation, with regard to the proposed drainage swell, the representation can be made on behalf of AAA that if the board approves the application, the creation of a rain garden subject to the DEP would be appropriate as an additional condition of approval.
That is correct.
And I'm sorry for interrupting if the, can you go further?
Sure. So moving beyond lot 57, lot 85, building 57, this one-way driveway, which in our previous, previously submitted plan, had a variance. We had 16 feet aisle width. Now, by reconfiguring the parking spaces, by putting it at 45-degree angle as opposed to 60 degrees, we were able to provide the, the required aisle width per the Milburn ordinance. And in addition to the removal and replacement of the pavement, new striping, landscaping, fencing, we are also proposing a light pole. Previously, we had two wall-mounted lights proposed here respecting the, the neighbor's request. We looked into that and were able to eliminate those lights and provide a light pole, which will direct the light away from the, the neighbors and onto the focus onto the parking area and towards East Willow Street. The rest of the lighting will be wall-mounted. And I'll go over in lighting in a minute. We have, in addition to the rain garden, potential rain garden and the proposed replatforms as well, the improvement that's been done in terms of storm drainage is that we have reduced the net impervious area. We have reduced impervious area significantly in the back of 45. We've eliminated some paved areas here. A significant amount of paved area we reduced on the east side of building 45 and in front of the building 45. So we have a net significant reduction in impervious area, which ultimately reduces the rate of runoff and also improves the quality of runoff as you reduce the impervious area, paved impervious area. So in terms of storm drainage, we are not increasing any runoff. In fact, we will be reducing the net runoff from both sites. And we'll be providing a managed runoff from the side into the river to a re-prep line swell and a possibility of a rain garden, which will further enhance the, the appearance as well as the water quality.
If you had a chance, Mr. Patel, to review the report of the city forester or the township forester?
Yes, we had reviewed, reviewed the, the report. We agree with most of the condition. As you could see, we have eliminated, there are existing trees here. We've eliminated, they also called for replacement of the trees, minimum 15 for the ordinance. We have, I would say, almost 28 new trees planned combined, 15 and 45 and the rest in lot 85, building 57.
And on behalf of the applicant, are you going to agree to the condition that there will be treatment of the existing sycamore trees that are between 45 and 57?
That is right. So Mr. Weber is referring to these two trees. And we will have the flexi pave for the, the walkways so that we do not damage the roots of these two beautiful trees that we have.
And then have you had an opportunity to review the report of Martha Callahan, the township engineer?
Yes, I have.
And could you refer to that for the board?
Yes. So would you like me to go to the document or?
If you don't mind. And certainly, Madam Chairwoman, if Ms. Callahan wants to engage in the questioning on her report, we would bow to her decision.
Thank you. Yeah, she's here. Martha, I guess, well, let's, let's, we'd be happy to hear Mr. Patel's testimony. And then if Martha wants to jump in, she reserves the right.
Thank you.
I hope I received the memorandum.
We are still seeing
See the plan. Okay, hold on. I believe you should be
There you go. Yep. Thank you.
So the, the memo describes the, the application, the site improvements, observations and comments. And at the end, we have recommendations. If the project is approved, the two lots will be combined, which we agree upon approval, will consolidate lot 84 and lot 85. It will become one lot. A re-prep blind drain as well is proposed on the side, is the north side of the new parking area. Engineer's comment says, I recommend that in addition to the swell, a rain garden be constructed to help mitigate stormwater runoff from the site. As mentioned before, we will contact DEP regarding this and discuss the appropriate reinforcement method, subject to their approval.
Right.
Improvements in the township right of way. Drive apron, granite block curb will be required in township, which we agree as previously mentioned by Mr. Weber. We will, out of four ingress, ingress points, we will be closing one of them on east side of building 45. We've already eliminated the pavement in that area, but we will also, we agree to replace that with a full real curb as opposed to depressed curb. And the last comment is about the inspection and the bank stabilization, which we already talked about.
If I can call your attention, Mr. Patel, who 1.4 and 1.4 indicates, it is noted here that the existing condition of parking stall dimensions in Iowa is a 57 East Willow do not conform with the development regulation standards. And that is representative of the fact that 57 East Willow was subject to this planning board's approval in 2015. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I wanted to just bring up the one point about the township drainage easement that runs between the two properties. Currently, we have a, I think it's 15-inch reinforced concrete drainage pipe that terminates at a headwall, an outfall into the river. And you would need to, the developer, the owner would have to sign a hold harmless with the township. But that's, it's a
We, that, we have discussed this with the applicant and we agree with that.
Okay.
And Madam Chairwoman, I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Gunning. And the fence that would surround the uninterrupted power supply in the generator on the side of 57 will comply with the six-foot fence ordinance of the township. So no variance is being requested with regard to that fence.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. Martha, you feel that that testimony and, and what was stated sounds, makes you feel more comfortable?
Oh, yeah. I'm comfortable with this.
Okay, great. Mark, I see you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I did have a couple of questions. Are you, are you designing your site? Like, how much in the way of of stormwater or rain event will you capture? Like, how many inches are you estimating?
So we, there is no existing detention facility at the site. And as a result of all these improvements, as I mentioned before, we are actually reducing the runoff by way of reducing the impervious area. And thereby, according to the Milburn Township, as well as New Jersey DEP standards, detention is not required, especially when you're reducing the runoff. So there is no current detention facility and there is nothing planned because of that reason.
Well, I mean, you, you're using some form of green infrastructure, you know, engineering on the site by incorporating the bio swell and the rain garden, I think, will, will be terrific. If you were to juxtapose that by permeable pavers in the parking area, you would, you would capture, you would enhance, increase infiltration and basically reduce runoff on both ends. The site that you said, there's a, is there a pipe or something that runs water into the excess water into the west branch on the one side? It was on the right side. I don't have my bearings. It's north or south?
There is, as mentioned before, I think by the board member, there is a easement between building 45 and 57, which takes the runoff from East Willow Street. And then it discharges. And then it discharges into the west branch of Robert River. And that's why we have that easement. But we have no connection from any of these two lots into that stormwater line.
Okay.
But we will, as I said, we will, as as a result of the the rain garden and the these re prep lines well, we will improve the water quality. It will get a little better water quality as opposed to existing. In existing condition, it is just sits there and and it's it's creating a ponding and and unmanaged way of discharging to us sheet flow into the river, which will be improved. On lot 50 or lot 85, there's already a rain garden that provides a little bit of quality, which was again approved in 2015 as part of that approval. And we will try to do similar thing on lot 84, building 45.
And the drainage swell, you're going to basically turn that into an enhanced rain garden or? Confused.
So the 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 re prep line stone, you know, stone line swell is already proposed. What we will be trying with DEP, if possible, if we can extend the area a little bit on the river side, we may be able to provide rain garden before the water discharged into the swell. So now to your point, yes, that would that could provide a little bit of detention. The rain garden is a is a sort of a a low area where the water ponds for a while and then it overflows at certain rainfall event. And it flows through the the re prep lines well into the river without creating any erosion. And while it sits there, it retains sediment and gives a little better quality. So that's how we'll improve the quality.
Okay, it would be nice to try to look at designing it to capture about three inches per storm event. And and that's really easy. It's not a very costly piece of engineering. It's just building up infiltration in the parking lot area. And using permeable pavers, as I mentioned, juxtaposed by the rain garden, you can capture more, you know, more water on site without discharging. And you figure the average rain event is somewhere, you know, south of an inch and a half. Wouldn't cost you much to make that modification.
Thank you. So that was it was a question and comment.
Right, thank you.
For Mr. Patel. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Patel? Ed, go ahead.
I I don't want to preempt the board if anyone on the board, I just don't want to be.
I don't see other questions, so go ahead.
Okay, I I've heard a couple of times reference to the board having granted variances or having approved certain things in 2015. And I'm not sure I I concur with that. And perhaps I'm just not reading the resolution correctly, but you did furnish the resolution as part of the package that was submitted on February 3, I think it was, in your February 4, in the comprehensive letter submitting the materials. And that that 2015 resolution, I believe, I'm looking at the same one that you had attached. And let me just make sure of that before I go any further. Yes, that's the same one I had. I didn't see any reference to parking space sizes. There, in fact, I the that was that was an application for minor subdivision approval to reconfigure the lots and and actually lot 84 was not part of that application. But I didn't see anything in that resolution regarding parking stall sizes that were pointed out in our engineers memorandum. And the only reference I saw of parking was that the existing parking is adequate for the proposed uses. 39 spaces are required and 55 spaces are existing and proposed. So I just. If that was a response to the engineer's comment, I'm not sure it's adequate. And I thought that in your original notice, Mr. Weber, when you were here in January, I guess it was, you had a reference to smaller parking sizes, if I can get your original notice.
If we get the and if we can get the current notice as well up so I can take a look at that as well. And in response to the resolution, it was just minor subdivision plus minor site plan approval.
Yes, I I get that, but in terms of parking stall sizes, which is what I think the engineer pointed out in that section 1.4, I think, of her report, the smaller sizes, there's no reference to smaller size spaces being approved in the resolution unless I.
What I suspect is that you had an existing parking arrangement 57 and they continued the existing parking arrangement and approved it as part of the minor site plan. And right now I'm looking for our current.
Yeah, your current notice does say that and I have it numbered seven because I numbered all of these, it's existing and previously proved undersized off street parking spaces in aisle widths where you cite the ordinance requires spaces to be nine by 19 feet and aisle width of appropriate, an aisle width appropriate to the angle and the standards regulating side yard setbacks. But you.
So what I suspect is that Ms. Alfonso has included that as a prophylactic conclusion. What we would suggest is to, we actually believe that the prior site site plan approval by the board would have carried over to the extent that, and I see your astute point, to the extent that the parking spaces require variance, an aisle with four existing spaces at 57, we would ask that the application would include that as set forth in the resolu- in the notice that Ms. Alfonso had anticipated including. So I have to give her kudos for protecting that with a prophylactic inclusion.
Okay, thank you. That was my my question on that. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you. Other questions from the board for Mr. Patel? Okay, seeing none. And oh, Gaston, I believe you have one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, just a clarification, the lighting was cleared up. When I looked at one of the drawings, it did include some lighting figures and it got a little weak towards the east side of the building. I think I heard it that that Martha is okay with everything with the lighting. There, Martha or Mr. Patel? Yeah?
Yes. The township engineer has confirmed that the lighting is in accordance and we did design in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. And also being sensitive of the neighbors and redirected, we are providing lances, spatial panel lances, which diffuses the light and glare. But as far as the photometrics are concerned, they are in accordance with the requirements.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Well, thanks.
Great, thank you. At this point, if there's no further board questions, I will turn to the public. If any members of the public have a question for Mr. Patel, it looks like Corey Biller has one for Mr. Patel. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I just want to, I think you misspoke once and I just want to confirm you misspoke. You were talking about the eight foot chain link fence. And then when you were talking about the fence in the back by the parking lot, you referred to it as a chain link fence. And I just want to confirm that you misspoke and that the intent is to have some sort of solid fence, whether it's overlapping or whatever the DEP requires, but that it's not a planned chain link fence for the back by the parking lot?
I'm sorry if I did that. I didn't realize, but yes, that was not the intent as shown on the plans. I'd be a chain link fence. There'll be a board on board, you know, composite fence.
The, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. The only other thing I had is I I noticed that by the turnaround area on the east side of building 57, that new turnaround area, there are plans for new trees to be installed, but there's not a fence also on the on the markings of the plan. And I wonder if consistent with the fencing and the trees in the back of the parking lot, that it might be possible to put fencing also by that turnaround area, because obviously if you're going to be having trucks turning around in that area, we'll have the same concern about noise and 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 light pollution.
Let me try and bring that up if I may. So I assume you would. You are talking about a fence here, right?
Yeah, there and then perpendicular, I suppose, where it's where the line coming off that says approximate proposed truck turnaround area. So that's so, you know, obviously the fencing grate is in the back, but if you're going to have trucks now come and turn around here as these trees will do a good, a decent job of blocking some of it, it'd be best to have also a fence over here so that it's more of a impervious barrier to to light and sound.
I will definitely discuss with AAA and get their opinion, but I don't see any big issues with that.
All right, I appreciate the the discussion. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul, I think you're with us. I don't know if you would know this offhand, but I don't know if doing something like that, extending a potential fence would constitute making it a side yard fence, would that potentially be happening if if they're doing what they were, I don't know how much you just followed what they were just discussing of possibly extending that fence down?
Uh, if I understand it correctly, I think if it is encroaching on the side yard, then I think that fence would have to comply with the whatever the requirements, including height of the fence in the in the side yard, I think technically it would. If that's if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah. And they are permitted, right? I I believe they are permitted.
Yeah, with I think that the limit is six feet on the height, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it would be the same issue. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I can speak with.
I'm sorry. So in terms of the headlights, the vehicles will mostly be coming in, making a U-turn and going out. So there shouldn't be any spilling headlights in that direction. However, I would, as I said, mentioned before, we'll leave it up to the board and AAA to consider that.
And if I have one minute, Madam Chairwoman, I'm trying to get the confirmation that it would be acceptable.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think that makes sense. But but given what Mr. Patel just stated, it, you know, I don't know that I don't know if we as a board collectively feel that 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 would be necessary to cover the part you're saying to the what appears in the upper right corner of the the plan.
Yeah, I just, you know, like, I don't know if I respectfully, I don't know if I agree with that because as a truck backs up, the lights will obviously, you know, the the headlights will be shining more. So if you go in deep in, sure, the the fence and the trees block it, but as you back up, especially to the houses that are sort of more east, you're the the lights become more apparent from the side here where the new trees are proposed to be planted. And then when you're backing up into this turnaround area, you have that backup beeping that can't be turned off. And so the fence will help sort of alleviate that noise as well.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Weber, you're just in consultation with AAA? Got it, got it. Yep.
I missed the in person where we could just lean over the table. I could say, this is what you're going to do.
Understood.
That Madam Chair, while we're waiting for a moment, and I don't mean it, I don't know if Mr. Biller had any other comments. I don't want to interrupt his questions.
No, I'm through. Thank you.
If I might, Madam Chair, Mr. Patel, with regard to the trash enclosure on the side of building 57, I don't see anything proposed as screening for it. I mean, I see lines and I see what appears to be openings to get to the trash receptacle. And I noticed that the that hashed line or or striped line above it is is a an elevated loading dock, I think, is what the designation is. How do you plan, if at all, to screen the that I'll call it the dumpster area, but the trash receptacle area?
So that that does have a chain link fence around with, so it will be completely enclosed. And this type area is a pavement and this is an elevated dock.
Oh, I see. Okay, the hash there is striped area is is the pavement.
That's right.
Okay. And and I assume that'll be a six foot high fence compliant with the ordinances. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Weber, I think we will turn to you for your next move.
I have several people. They want a recess. Now I have a recess, Madam Chair, so I can have a phone call.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's can we make it just six minutes and convenient 9:20? Do you think?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, let's shoot for 9:20. Thank you all. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're filing back in slowly but surely, let's just certainly wait for council to be here and and everybody else. We just need, and there he is, okay, I think I see everybody else who we need to continue, so no further ado, welcome back, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've had an opportunity to speak with AAA, they're willing to agree to extend the fencing. If I could recall Mr. Patel and ask him to pull up the CO7, which has been marked as A3, so that we can see with certainty the area that the fencing would be extended to address the truck turnaround.
I believe everybody sees the CO7? CO7A?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Miller, can you please repeat, what would you like me to do?
I would ask that the chair allow Mr. Biller to be heard and to help us diagram his request for the extension of the fence. I believe in the meanwhile, Mr. Patel, that the board on board fence that is already shown at the end of the area be continued to the right, be between the stone drainage area.
So I, we cannot cross the stone drainage area because we cannot obstruct the flow there. So we will have to leave, which is why we planted this tree in a way that we block any possibility of light spilling into that area. There is an overlap of these existing trees and these proposed trees, whereby we are, we are blocking most of the light. And that's the reason why we could not extend the, the fence beyond that line either. Because that swell cannot be crossed with the fence.
So I, I can appreciate that reality, so if we can just continue the fence then after the rain garden and then sort of along the, I'm, I'm putting my fingers if you guys can see it. Exactly where the hand is, exactly where the hand is, is doing that now, yeah.
And how about a, so it'd be in the shape of a U, if you will?
It'll be an L shape, yeah, U shape roughly.
L U. L probably.
Okay. AAA agrees to that change to the plan to extend the fence in that area in order to further shield the truck turnaround area.
Now, that, will that be the six foot high fence compliant with the ordinance, or are you looking for a higher fence than that?
It would be a seven foot fence, that was what the neighbors would have been looking for in order to assure the shielding of any lights, and since this is a truck turnaround area, it would only make sense to have the additional foot to provide that additional protection and recognize that the, because this fence is not on a property line, but is behind the structures, 57 and 45, that the benefits to be gained by that extended height would substantially outweigh any detriment. Because as we know, the neighbor's property on the other side of the Royal Way River would not have the fence right on their property line. But we have a fence that's really in the middle, well, not in the middle, but toward the middle of the properties. And I would suggest that that would justify the grant of the variance, Mr. Bozak.
Well, I was just looking to, to see whether we needed to get a variance or not, and whether we were including it, and the answer is yes, there is a need for variance for that. So that, that was really my point.
Again, to just remind everyone that that will still be subject to DEP approval, as it is still in a flood hazard area.
Understood.
I do also want to acknowledge AAA and, and this type of interaction is just evidences the continuing relationship and, and goodwill that AAA has, has displayed to us as neighbors and, and willingness to, to address our needs, so I, I think it should, it should go noted, their willingness to cooperate.
Thank you, Mr. Biller.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, thank you. So with that discussion point.
Madam Chairwoman, I have available the architect, if there are any questions of the board members with regard to the architect. The, but one of the benefits that we have.
We have made that one.
One there, thank you. But one of the benefits that we've had from compiling the EIS is that it has allowed for the application to address any number of issues and to allow this process to move ahead expediently, if I can say. The, but we do have the architect available, if there's any questions of the board members with regard to the architect.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
All right, then I would ask that Mr. Osborne be called to the stand, be sworn in.
Mr. Weber, sorry, Mr. Weber. Sorry, Mr. Weber, I was calling on member Mattson, I think he was just unmuting, so, sorry, just hold for one second, thank you, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Weber. I have just one more question. So in, in addition to looking into permeable pavers where you're getting some stormwater runoff, enhancing infiltration in the, in those areas and the rain garden additions and upgrades, which I'm really pleased by, would you agree to putting two EV parking spaces on your facility? For your staff?
Mr. Patel or Mr. Gunning, if Mr. Gunning is, there is Rob. Mr. Gunning, do you understand an electric vehicle charging station?
Yes, I do, I do understand electric vehicle charging station. That was not part of our original scope and, you know, it's, I don't know, I don't know what the cost of that would have and, and, and where, where we would put it, but I don't know if that, it's something we can look into.
Yeah, it's my understanding, Mr. Patel, that the EV parking spaces don't take up any more room, but they just require a further setback in order to accommodate the electrical housing, is that correct?
That is right. That is right. With limited space we have, that minimum distance is required between the the existing structures and the parking spot may pose some challenge.
Thank you, but I do appreciate the, the question.
And looking into it, I'd appreciate this, they're making them a lot more efficient these days, requiring a lot less space. So anyway, it's the wave of the present.
And Mr. Gunning, would you be willing to look into it?
I would be willing to look into it, I, I don't have the information readily available, we have to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Gunning.
Thank you. And I just, before we move on, I just wanted to ask one more time if any other members from the public had any questions for Mr. Patel, who gave our most, who was our most recent witness, I just wanted to give that opportunity. Okay, great, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just had a, a point of clarification, because I, I thought I heard Mr. Patel indicate that the fence around the dumpster was chain link. But I think the plan showed that that was a wood fence, and I don't know if he spoke or I misunderstood.
I, I, I believe it's my mistake, it's not chain linking, it's the wood fence, and it's, as it's detailed on our drawings, it will be a wood fence, six foot with the strips around, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you both. Great. Any other questions at this point? Okay, did anybody have any questions or would like to ask questions of the architect? And if not, we do not need to have him or her sworn in. Okay, Mr. Weber, it appears there are none at the time.
At this point, Madam Chairwoman, I would submit the application to the consideration of the board for approval.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, Ed, I believe I will turn to the members of the public and ask for any testimony, is that, does that sound appropriate?
Yes, I think you opened it up for questions after each witness, so I think that's appropriate at this time.
Great, so just to restate, if any members from the public would like to come in, be sworn in and make any statement or testimony, or provide any testimony, now is your opportunity to do so. If there's anything that has gone unstated. Seeing none, then we open it up here to the board for our own discussion, questions, comments, just our, our own dialogue before we, if needed, if we, before we proceed to any votes. And so I just wanted to reiterate, you know, Sanjeev, I, I, I think you started going into this a little bit earlier and if I heard you right, and I don't want to paraphrase, so feel free to jump back in, but you, I know, had been part of the discussion last meeting when you requested the, the EIS, and it sounds like you, you felt satisfied with what they additionally provided.
I would actually make one further comment. As I said, last time when, when everything was being discussed in the environmental study, I was looking for more of the finished good and raw materials and and the kind of materials they were making, which I couldn't even understand, when they said radioactive, I was a little bit more scared. But when I read from this booklet, they said, I went through everything and they had appendix G where they really talk about radioactive disposal and whatever they have at the site. I was a little kind of worried too, that they may send it to a recycle lot here in town, and everything was cleared up. I didn't mean to create disturbance last time, but the way the company has come back and answered all the question and the professionalism they showed, I am actually sorry if I may have disrupted the meeting last week or last time, but to me, I don't have any questions. To me, it looks very good, and thank you again.
No, absolutely, and thank you for that commentary, that's, that's okay. Anybody else have concerns, comments? Gaston, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, just, just a, two questions. One, we had talked about a setback variance last time for the building on the east, and whether that was going to carry like forever, or if it was actually just going to be, I don't know, conditioned or something. Is that still in play? What is that variance still being requested? And two, if it is, does it apply if the lots are combined now to the other building as well?
The response to that is similar to the off-street parking question with regard to 57. 57 was the subject of the minor site plan approval, they confirmed the location of the building. The, we have requested a front yard setback variance with regard to 45 and indicated that it could apply to 57 as well. From our perspective, we'd like it to be considered as a variance because then there was the right to rebuild in the event that it's ever destroyed. To the extent that it is deemed to be pre-existing nonforming, then we have that risk. The one point I would make is that it was subject to the minor site plan of this planning board. And that is the building of 57, that's not being changed. Does that provide you with enough answer, Mr. Hooper and Mr. Bozak?
Well, let, let me just add to what you said. There was a variance granted for the front yard setback for lot 85, which is 57. So, so that, and there was no, as far as I could see in the resolution, there was no limitation on that to just this existing building or so forth. So I think that that variance has already been granted. It, it would make sense, given the scope of the application here, which is, which involves a consolidation of the lots and effectively the creation of a campus to, to consider that same variance for 45, a lot 84, so that it would, it would just seem to make sense as opposed to either not granting it because it's a pre-existing condition because it's a pre-existing condition or limiting the life of it in some way to the life of the building because we didn't do that with the adjacent building. Thank you.
Okay, and just clarification. We are, this is now, and I guess we'd normally call it a subdivision, but this is going to be a consolidation where we'll be voting on combining the lots 84 and 85, I guess it is?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Among other things, but yes, that's.
Yes, among other things, yeah.
Yes. And as a condition of approval, it would be a requirement that there would be a deed of consolidation filed because these are two separate properties right now. Even though they're brought in by advanced accelerator applications and different forms, that would be a condition of approval.
Okay, and I may want to have a little discussion with Sanjeev here. As far as operations go, when we do a consolidation, the operations will expand. It, now that we have a large lot, the buildings could essentially be connected one day. Sanjeev, do you have any concerns about that with the expanded facilities?
So, so that's what I read. And I guess because I read and we have not spoken with back and forths with the team here, just so you understand, we work in manufacturing and my work is in manufacturing as well. These people, they don't waste anything in the townyard or town hall. They take it to a different place and dispose their, whatever they're not using. I was worried about finished good that was made. Since it said the shelf life is 72 hours, they have to get it out. What if there's a snowstorm and it's not gotten out? What are they doing about it? So everything, they take it out with the professional service and dump it not within Melbourne. They dump it somewhere else privately taken out. And please correct me, team, if I am off here. And even if their scope and the capacity increased by 50%, that's what I heard last time, whether they make, whether the demand is there or not. But if they're able to make 50% more than what they're producing today, even if they make that, it doesn't matter because all those products that they, they make zero, zero radioactive or bad waves, it's all controlled very well. And all the waste and all the materials that they, that is out, that is an probably as a output is not being thrown out here on our, on our town, in our town hall or recycle that we, that I was concerned about. So that's why I did not say anything and I thanked them. It's a pretty comprehensive report. I didn't see the date. It could be from the previous time when they made it. But in, either way, it's, it's good. I feel very comfortable.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion on this application?
I would like the motion to approve this application with the conditions.
Thank you, Jorge.
I'll second.
And thank you, Gaston, for seconding. And just before we take the vote and for the record, Ed, do you want to state any of those specific conditions? Or do we reserve the right to? Document the memorialization, so.
This is one of those applications where I've been trying to scribble notes and cross out things that I had as conditions and add other conditions and so forth.
Yeah, understood.
But let me, let me at least mention some of them and these are among them. There will likely be others. And I just need a little clarification when I go through this.
That's fine.
The variance is in the waivers because some have been eliminated, some haven't really been discussed. We didn't have any planning testimony to sort of put it all together. So it makes it a little bit more difficult. We will address in some way Exhibit A4, which is this agreement with the, with the property owners. It will be done in a way where the township does not become the enforcer. But, but that the commitments that the applicant made to the residence is set forth in the, in the resolution in some way. There being acceptance of the various recommendations and the professional reports that have been submitted. The applicant will file for any DEP permits to allow the fencing and anything else within 60 days of the date of approvals. The board would be looking to grant a variance for the seven-foot-high fence in the rear. There'll be a compliance six-foot-high wooden fence around the trash receptacle areas. There'll be the seven-foot L-shaped fence subject to DEP approval as well, as was the seven-foot fence in the rear. L-shaped fence around the turnaround, the new turnaround area on Lot 85. There'll be a deed of consolidation requirement. There'll be a variance to allow for the two buildings on a single lot. There'll be a waiver for the three driveway, three driveways that will now be on a single lot. There'll be the variance for, and I apologize for jumping around here. There'll be a variance for the front yard setback for Lot 84. And I think there's also one on Lot 80. Did you say, Mr. Weber, that Lot 85 is the one that's going to have the stucco put on? So there'll be a short, there'll be a little bit shorter front yard than the one that was granted? Or was that on 40, Lot 45 East Willow?
45 East Willow.
Okay, so, so the variance for 57 will remain the same that was granted previously, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, that, that's what I have at this juncture. There may be more, but that will all be set forth in the resolution and then you'll have a chance to, to review it and see if I've captured everything or captured too much.
Absolutely, okay, appreciate that, thank you. So we have a, we have a nomination in a second. So Eileen?
Gaston Halpert?
Yes.
Jorge Master Pinto?
Yes.
Mark Mattson?
Yes, with the, just the addition, Ed, of, you know, the enhanced and additional rain garden added and permeable, permeable pavers to look at in areas that have, that pond and look at, as per Mr. Gunning, you know, two EV charging stations. And that's consistent of three recent projects that we did where the developer added charging stations to their projects.
I will add that, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Maggie Biggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes, with the comment that Mr. Bozak will earn his keep when he does this resolution.
Sanjeev Anayak?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Miriam Salerno?
Yes.
Beth Sol?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, board members.
Thank you all. Appreciate the discussion and cooperation, so thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we will be adjourning.
No, no.
No, we're not.
We're closed session.
Will we to move to closed session? We make a motion and do so?
Yes, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Great, I will make a motion to go to closed session.
I will second.
The closed session, just for the record, is, is for me, as the attorney for the board, to provide them with some legal advice, not with regard to any particular application.
But you don't need me for that, right? Eric, the Corey Porter.
I'm looking to see.
I saw you looking, that's why I said it.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do not need you, thank you, Eric.
Okay.
But before we, before we take a vote, I, just for everyone's recollection, I believe, and I hope I can do this, but Eileen sent out a separate email with a separate attachment with a separate link to get to a closed session call. So this, we'll all sign off this if I get this correctly, is that right, Eileen?
So we're all, Nicole is going to stay in this meeting. Otherwise, it will close down. We're, Paul, I don't think you have to come to the closed session. I could be wrong. You can come. You want to, you can come, you're welcome to come, it's.
I'm unhappy if I'm not needed.
Okay. And so we'll go into closed session, we'll do the discussion and then we'll, hopefully a quorum of us will come back into open session so we can adjourn.
Don't forget about me.
We'll come back, okay.
Everyone, that link which has the link to get into the meeting.
We need to take a vote on the motion to close.
We, we did. Beth made the motion, Miriam did the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We got it?
Hope to see you on the other side.
Okay, be a minute.
Because now, where, I can't find, hold on. Because I have to hand over, where am I? Where is my name in the panel? Oh, there I am, I have to make you the host. Because I can't.
Can the rest of us jump over to the other meeting?
Yes.
Let's try, okay, bye-bye now.
I will try.
Okay, you got it.
Nicole, I am making you the host. Yes, I want to change you to the host, okay. All right, hopefully this works.
Go to the other meeting. Joe, go to the other meeting. You're muted, Joe. Can't hear you.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I know how to get into the other meeting.
I think it came to you in an email.
It came to me in an email. I've got to go find the email and click on it.
And go in.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Bye.
See you in a few.
I hope.